... The pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, the one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
For God Almighty, in whose name the founders of this country had great beliefs and faith, and won liberties for themselves and for us. They lifted torches from the nations that are unborn. Grant that we and all people of this village, town, and land, they have the grace to maintain our liberties in your holy righteous sanctum. We ask this to Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and all his spirit, one God, forever and ever.
Amen. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Okay. First thing we usually do now is come to the public input. If anyone would like to have a moment to just raise your hand, say your name, and head up.
Next, I'm Asher, Seventeen Hall Street, Walton, New York. I have heard a lot of gossip, comments about the status of X Chief Dazio. Is he still a police officer?
Yeah.
Or is the status, is he a inspector or whatever?
We, we had made a statement last, last month that he was going to be a detective and was going to stay on with us. Uh, you know, in civil service, there's no such rank as detective. So, he will remain a police officer and he's going to be working for the department.
I have a question about that. When he was a police chief, he was a part-time police chief.
Correct.
And now we have a full-time police chief.
Correct.
And now we're still having him as a part-time. How is that, this, what, what, how is it possible?
Because, because we, we are still understaffed. We should have at least five full-time officers and some part-time officers. We have, with, with Chief T- Tahir that took over, we just have four full-timers right now. So, we still need another full-time one. Plus, we need part-time to take over when they take days off, personal leave days, vacations, things like that. In order to really run without having any part-time, we probably have to have six full-time officers. And that would be astronomical for us.
You know, there must be a lot more that goes on in this village than you see in the papers. Because when I read the paper, you know, there's a couple of people, there's some domestic violence, and then somebody gets a victim with a D W I, and that seems like it's kind of over there for them. There's much money being spent.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you. What you read in the paper are crimes committed by these people. They're not in the, if you don't get in the paper, all the domestic disputes, people call up that, the car problem, there's, there's a thousand other things that people call up that you don't put in the paper. This, Walton is the busiest police officer station in the county. We are way far busier than anybody else. So, you don't read all the other things that are going. There's a lot of things people call up for us that we don't put in the paper. So, that's Walton.
So, Officer Dazio, is he still a police officer?
He'll be, he'll be, he'll, he'll be a police officer working some part-time hours. It's not a lot, but maybe ten, fifteen hours a week, I don't know how many, we'll see.
And he got a raise?
Well, no, he got a, he-
Well, he makes more than the other police officers.
Well, that, that, part-time doesn't match the other police officers. The other police officers all make thirty something dollars an hour more. So, he, he's part-time. Uh, we, we have, we had a rule of twenty-five dollars an hour for part-time. He had asked because he's got over twenty years' lives, if we would pay more. We had, they had said last time that we pay twenty-eight dollars an hour. We're going to discuss, we may do it for everybody, I'm not sure what, what the board's going to want to, going to want to make us feel fair. And we want, want, want to make, we would like to make it, um, let's see what I want to say, a place that some of the other part-time officers want to come over and work for. It's all about money. Um, I'm a fan of getting as many part-time as we can, because when you have a part-time officer, it helps you out, I think you guys would experience. And if you had some part-time officers, you're not paying for their healthcare, you're not paying for their holiday days, you're just paying for their hourly rate. So, for me, I'd rather, I'd like to have three or four guys that work part-time. It would save us on our budget, but give us coverage. That's it. Okay?
Thank you for that.
I hope so. Thank you. Anytime. Anyone else has a, yes?
Hey there. My name's Amanda Tantling, and I live at ten Fair Street. I'm here with two things for you guys today. The first thing is I'd like to ask your permission to close down Fair Street this Saturday before Fair, so that'd be August tenth, from the hours of ten AM to two PM for the second Walton Chalk Art Day.
Should we August tenth?
Yep. Ten AM to two PM. I've had the okay from the Fair Board, and I've also had the okay from the other residents that was on Fair Street. So, I just wanted to see if that's something I can do again next year.
I think we did that last year too. I, I-
Yeah, we did that last year.
So, I, I, and that was a prerequisite for this company, the Fair Board. You both are neighbors, everything right, or anything?
Yep, yep. And they said okay to it.
That's, that's, I would love to make the motion. Okay, make that one. Your second? August tenth? Second. That from tenth to, all paid them? Okay, yes.
Okay, and then, great, thank you.
At least we're fifty percent now, so yeah.
Fifty percent, okay, first thing down, okay. Uh, the second thing is, is that, um, I have young kids, and we go to Austin Lincoln Park all the time, and I noticed that Austin Lincoln Park doesn't really have a lot of playground equipment that's accessible to all people, all children. So, I was wondering if, one, if there's any money, any type of budget to pay for some access- accessible, like swings. Um, I have some here that are, uh, for different body types and different children, maybe children who need transfers from wheelchairs or stuff like that. And if there isn't any money in any type of park budget for something like that, I'm curious if I can begin fundraising for something like that. Um, a swing, um, this is just, I have a couple from autismproducts.com. They're around a thousand dollars for a swing, and my idea is that I'd like the swing to be put on the set with the other swings, so not on its own swing set, so that it's inclusive and the children can swing with everybody. And then I also saw one that's for people who use wheelchairs, and they would have their own swing set, and that one's a little bit closer to thirty-one hundred dollars. But if there's no money, I'd, but I just, I run a lot of different things in town. I have markets downtown, Market on the Green. So, I'd like to just put out just a little jar or something and begin fundraising, and maybe that's something that we could purchase and put into Austin Lincoln next year.
There is no money in any kind of budget, and it's terrible for us.
Yeah.
But fundraising is awesome, and we would love-
I'll go near-
-help with that, because legally, we're not allowed to do that as a, as a bill for you.
Yeah, and I just, I, I have so many different opportunities, like the market that I run, also the Walton Chalk Art Day. I could just put out a little jar or something like that, and, you know, somebody who I told this to, they're like, "Well, how many kids would benefit from this?" Well, we don't know, because there isn't equipment like that available for different able bodies down there. So, maybe parents who have a child with physical disabilities, they can only take one child at a time. I just think that it would be beneficial for a community to have something like that.
The idea sounds very good. Uh, what I would suggest, that you speak to Brian's brain.
Okay.
Know Brian, right?
I don't know who that is.
Brian runs the recreation committee down at the, at the park. Anyone would look into where the, how we could fit everything in. I, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Just got to figure where we're going to put it, how, you know.
Sure. And like I said, the one swing, the thousand dollars-
Would that be that's at Austin Lincoln, or are you talking over here off on Green Wall Street?
Well, start with Austin Lincoln, because that one's used, you know, for many different sports and rec programs and things like that. And the specific swing that I'm talking about to just start out with, that one I would like to be hung on the same swing set, so if we could take one of those rubber ones that go like this and take it out and replace it with something like that.
Yeah.
That way, everybody's swinging together, and they don't have their own frame with their own swing, you know? Um, but the wheelchair one, that could be used by youth and adults, and, you know, some people may never have had the experience of being on a swing before. So, that would be more of its own swing set, so.
I understand that one hundred percent. I, I have a daughter that was so involved with it, used to have issues with that, so I, I, I understand exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
So, how do I go from here? Because I'd like, I have a market this Friday, I'd love, I'd love to put something out on my table to start fundraising for it.
I'm trying to think of what's the best way as far as you're collecting the, but you've got a whole bunch of funds this year, you've collected up there.
Yeah, yeah, and, and hopefully to purchase in the spring of next year.
I would like to leave one comment in terms of, because I'm still designing programs in New York City.
Oh, okay.
So, there isn't just the factor with cost of the swing itself, you're going to have to provide accessible safety services and everything.
True.
Like you can't use, uh, bar chips are not considered accessible.
Right.
And, uh, I don't, I haven't seen the swing set, but I know that, uh, we did require all swing sets to be fenced in, so kids can't randomly be running behind or in front of the plane. So, I don't know what the safety situation is there now, but those would be two additional costs to consider for your, and you may want to get in touch with the play equipment company itself.
Yeah, I've made a call.
Okay. Because sometimes they will do community type things, giving you a call.
Right, yeah. Okay, great, yes, hope that's something you consider as well. Okay, thanks for that. That's really helpful. So, yeah, oh, yeah, so what, how do I go from here?
Well, I, you, you can do fundraising all you want, you don't need to offer.
Yeah, but would I have to talk to just him to see? I just wanted to make sure that this is something that you guys, because it is a village park, right? So, I would-
We would certainly grant permission to put anything in. I mean, we would love to do that. I'm talking for the board as a whole here, but I don't, I don't think there's any disagreement.
No, we're, we're all for that.
We just, we rely on grant funding, we don't have any money in the budget.
Sure, yeah. So, so if I want to start fundraising, I should talk to him about where something like that could go, and then the-
Then, then just explain, just explain to him what, what you want to do, and he'll cook it. But as far as doing the fundraising, fine, go ahead, start tomorrow, whatever.
Okay, perfect. And how do I get in touch with him? Do you guys have a phone number, email, what's the best way, or is it going to be a tool?
Yeah. Probably good, and he's at the pool every day, I mean.
Is he at the, okay.
I, I, I can get you his phone number and anything else.
Okay. Perfect, that's all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Yes?
Um, Brenda Ellis, I live on Saint John Street in Walton, and I sent a letter in about-
We got to talk about it.
Okay, so I don't need to-
We can do it now, hang on a minute. Hey, just let me, I- We're going to do it on the board, if you have it. This one, sir? No.
No.
That's right. On the thirteen St. John. Twenty bucks, huh? Yeah, yeah. In order, I just, I don't know. I'm going to read, I usually read the letter first. I read everybody's letter, and then you talk about it. Village Board, I am requesting that there be no parking on seventeen Saint John Street. The road is too narrow for either, from, from either side to be parked on. I run a business, and my, my neighbor's parked right across from my driveway that I am all, I put another spot in for my customers, they wouldn't have to be parked on, which means, one of my customers backed into the sta- backed into them because, like I said, it's too narrow. Thank you for that, correct? Um, we'll discuss that as a board, but my, my, my first, I spoke to Butch, who is the D W superintendent, to make sure, number one, that street fits the wa- width of every street. And he, right, Butch, he said it fits, considering narrow. It, it is narrow, but it fits qualifications of the D W, D E P, uh, D C O, I think, or what happened, I don't remember. Um, my personal feeling is, I, I hear where you're coming from, but there are a few other people that have businesses in the village that want us to do similar things. And once we start doing that, for one, we have to do everything, and that's my own personal feeling. But, uh, hopefully that opens for the boards and-
I have neighbors that, like, there's a dead-end street right there, and when they pull out, they can't, the dude, like, the guy parks right there, if he's not in the road, he's on the sidewalk. So, he's obstructing both sidewalk or the road. And, and you can't bring two cars down that road. Like, somebody's got to stop when he's parked there, and the other guy goes. Now, if I get to park on the street and he gets to park on the street, Dave Garcia's not getting through there with his payload. You know, so-
Yeah, I-
He's not getting through there. It's, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a line enough for you.
I, I, I had the D W superintendent, Butch, take a look at it. And you want to say, "We don't need?"
Well, it's definitely narrow, and if we were to do that, it would have to be no parking at either side of the street.
That's right.
Especially from we, all with the intersection of Burton.
Right, yeah.
Of course, this guy go public, and it's a public law, and all that, the court, and the thing, but, but.
There's no room to park, though. If he's parked, if they're parked on the side of the street, they're, they're on the sidewalk if he's over far enough to get out of the road.
No, I hear what you're saying, but, you know, we're just saying, ask for, it's going to be public.
Now, before you can do something, we can't, we can't just randomly do, it has to be a public hearing, and allow all the people that live on there, coming, but there is your opinion on it. It can't be one person saying, "I want to park."
I get that, I get that.
It's got to be the whole thing.
Well, can we do that?
Well, how many, because, what, can, fuck, the board, yeah. What do you think, where do you want to go? Where do you guys want to go?
Ask. Sure. Is there alternative place for him to park?
Yes, there's, like, over on the side, there's a spot for two, two cars, which, these are just visiting people there. I don't know if they live there. Um, and then around on the dead-end street, there's another parking area. So, the people that actually live there have two cars, and then there's two people that visit all the time, and the ones that visit are the ones that are on the street. And he keeps staying right in that parking spot right after he got hit.
I don't, I don't need to hear from him, because I'm just calling the guy. Have you spoken to him about the issue, and he's not convinced, yeah?
He said it's, it's public parking, and he can park wherever he wants.
So, there we have it.
So, but, yeah, I mean, now he's got a big old Band-Aid on his truck. I'm curious. Big Band-Aid.
So, I'm, I'm open to suggestion. Yeah, I'm open to explore, having a public hearing, as a public law, changes, like, what happens to the public? I'd probably love to do what? Has no parking?
On one side or both sides?
On both sides? I would say both sides. If you're going to do the parking, you got to do it on both sides and half way. And, and if you want to do that, I would, have to a public hearing, and get the biggest people to come up here and have their say on how they feel.
It is a narrow section, I guess.
I know it's narrow, I mean, I know the street very well, I've traveled a lot, so, I mean, I, I-
Yes, and it's very shallow.
I hear where you're coming from, and I've had a few people talk to me about it.
Yeah.
So, we, we, we could do a public hearing.
Public hearing, with the, the emotion.
Yeah, and when do you want to do it? That's what you did? So, what, that motion, we have a public hearing would be our August meeting that we have.
So, motion to have a public hearing, August, we've got both parking on both sides.
Is that all, is, is that just going to be between me, between me and Bert, right? Yeah, the other one, go carry. Do I have a second on that? Paul, favor?
Ah.
Oh? Carry. Fair enough.
So, would you just send a letter to everybody?
Yeah.
On that street?
It would be a legal notice.
It would be a legal notice.
Legal notice could pay for the payment. So, it wouldn't be individual reach out, but recommend everybody, one letter on the street.
Okay.
But, you know, everybody knows everything as well.
Yeah.
Whoever comes up and what they say will make a recommendation there, think it's great for everybody, okay? Is that good enough?
That's great. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say?
Yeah, I just got a paper from the South Mall.
I think I see four, though, yeah. Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
You are, Andy Hale, yes.
Hello.
Thank you.
I brought, um, I brought, excuse my back, got it. I brought a report for each one of you, um, well, let me say who I am and where this type of control. Uh, I'm with, my name is Andy Hale, I'm with Metal Energy, and what we are is a community solar company. And you have a solar company now, Constellation, we do basically the same thing, thank you. The good news is, they're doing good for you. We couldn't replace them. They're just fine. But the one thing that they are not providing for you is actually the, um, the delivery of your electrical energy. If you want to use that, you can, if somebody gets a little step higher, or so, I'm wondering if you could. So, what we would do is, in addition, you would save with us, in addition to what you're already saving with Constellation. And we would just save you on the delivery of the electrical energy itself. And it comes up to about, if you look at the last number there on the bottom, something did. Why don't take that personally? If you look at that, you can see that, um, you would save about seven hundred and fifty dollars a year on top of what you're already saving.
They can consolidate.
And it costs absolutely nothing, just not enough. And if you ever decide you want to quit, you always can do that, too. But, um, it's, it's a win-win situation. We get along with your business, Constellation is doing a very good job for you, and all we are is, is adding to the savings that you've got, and Constellation, if you get all ready. Do we have questions at this point, or?
There's, there's other difficulties that, or-
Oh, Asha, oh, yeah, yeah, uh, Billard Jabelha just signed up, Fleischman's just signed up, Jan Nathan, Wolf, uh, Andy, Marfil, and Little Town, all signed up, and have been supplying water. What we can, and we can also kind of keep track of what your usage is, and if you notice at the bottom there, we have some ineligible meters, because they hardly use it all. You have to have a minimum of a thousand kilowatt hours per year to start, uh, getting the savings, but like, there's one that's eight hundred and something, we'll keep track of that. To see, at some point, it goes above a thousand, we can put that also on the price you can get.
Right. I don't know, they go, Wayflasshe, no, Wayflasshe was playing on here.
It's not?
No. That, that would be the number one thing to have on here, because they, young enough people live, well, like, fifty, forty dollars a day, they love, you know. But, but that, that's our biggest, like, we would prob- We would probably double that number just a little more.
That's well.
They can run Wayflasshe, but you guys go to a lot, the pump's always running, and those people buy a poop anymore, we would save money. Don't you?
I had you, but I would-
I know, I know, it's, it's, but I mean, we could say, we could always save quite so much money.
Great, that would be great. I will find out what that is for you, but let's assume that it's about a thousand dollars every, a year.
Yeah.
And that might buy a piece of equipment, or playground, or something.
Yeah. A lot more than that, I know. I, I'm sure that number's going to be doubled.
And this is a copy of, you've all gotten a copy of the, um, the contract with all the rules, situations, and everything, and that's filled out. So, all, all we'll do is, if you guys decide to do this, it's just a matter of a single thing. And I will get the other, um, the other-
Yeah, please do. And, um, this is something we need to, I don't think it's nice. No, no, we got it.
No, it's great, absolutely.
I like the idea, get the Wayflasshe plan, and, and then at the next meeting, go back to the system.
Terrific, okay.
Now, you also, didn't you say to us at the meeting that, also for homeowners?
Absolutely, and I have some, uh, forms that people want to fill out, and I'll bring them up here.
Yeah, bring it. We got a couple of forms. Anybody in the homeowner, now, if people-
Ten percent, absolutely.
Anyone in the village wants to sign up for this program, you could save ten percent off your, your electric part, not the gas part, the electric part. So, like me, running electric every month is probably fifty, eighty, you know?
Yeah.
Well, thirty dollars is better in my pocket than in their pocket, so.
Well, what, and let me explain it to everybody, this part of the grant, what we do is you owe your own money, right?
Yeah, we're all like, yeah.
I know, I am too. But you'll always give them sort of space, that will be like seventeen, twenty dollars, something like that, because you want to keep the lights on, the bills coming, all that stuff, that's what they do. We handle everything else, the delivery and the supply of all of your electrical energy. So, say you had a two hundred dollar bill, and twenty of that's going to them, so you have twenty, two hundred, what's a hundred and eighty left? So, we would save you half of that hundred and eighty, ten percent, which a hundred and eighty would be what, eighteen dollars? So, you'd save nine dollars every month, or whatever. The important thing to know about it is, though, that it's always ten percent off your nicely billed. So, it's never something where we could ever charge you more money than what you're actually paying to nicely, it will always be ten percent less. I'm going to leave some information up here, along with the, uh, the forms to fill out, and if anybody's interested. Uh, my name is all over everything, yeah. Do you have views, is there a amount, or? Yes, that's good, but it's a thousand, it's a thousand kilowatt hours per year, and like, my typical one is about seven hundred a month, seven hundred kilowatt hours a month, so that's pretty typical. And you can see right on your bill what you're using as far as your kilowatt hours, so. Thank you, so, you're welcome. I'll bring those up.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, that's good, yeah. Anyone else have anything they'd like to say, while they have a chance? We want, we want, so. Okay, thank you. Um, next thing is up at track, I'm hoping everybody has a chance to take a look at them, if, if, or, as correction, very, I need a motion.
I would like to, I would like to make a motion that we maybe have to-
Paul, favor? Oh, carry. Uh, first, Bob ahead, on the top of works. Which fit?
One way, one way, one way, with the, yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have another one?
Do you?
I don't know, everybody, or anybody out of the board, we have to, you know, we should warn us. You know, a whole lot of stuff happen anytime. The, the larger thing is the kind of construction that's doing good, um, thirty, number four, tomorrow, definitely long, so. Time to put this on, uh, some, 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 some baking trough. Well, just a little cover stuff, just, water issues.
Any questions, Larry, can we answer? Well, sir? We always pray that you get the well back, that we do well, and get it after, and, uh, we do well for what, um, with, you know, having that board, the board runs back up. Anything on the tank, how, whether you think the tank might be ready?
I'm not sure yet, I know the forty, I'm sure.
Oh, okay, got it, good. The other one would be up until we get funding, so you find you, so if I don't see a funding[1698.21] The other one would be up is that we get funding, so you find you, so if I don't see a positive, put them, running, you know, okay. You have any questions, for what? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Chief Hark.
All right.
First, I'd like to say I wanna welcome you. Thank you, congratulations, you're welcome to, to start here with us again, Walter, as our chief. We're looking forward to, uh, many good years to come.
So I believe I, uh, delivered, uh, the report. So, I, I've been told that, um, all has been up, for most of you, it's a very good...
Two hundred seventy-nine call. You'll see that in the...
Yeah.
Yeah, but you know, when I go to the police station and I ask it why they don't arrest the drug dealers, it would make me, they tell me really, because by the time they get the cell line, and they get back here, that the drug people are already back here, so why bother? So hearing that from a police person is kind of disheartening. Absolutely.
Some of that is true, um, the why bother part, I don't particularly like, but, um...
That's the part that I have a problem with.
Right, and there's a lot that just goes into this, not just, hey, don't go, don't drug the rest of them, there's a whole lot, and I'm sure you know...
You know, I realize that, but it's being called why bother, is really...
Right, I don't agree with that, and, um, sorry you got that answer, brother.
I hope not. I hope things are children.
Yeah, big change, it is. But it's tough sometimes, you know, sometimes it does get frustrating. I remember when I was on the job, we used to go and, and make buying buses, they were on a shop. And by the time we get back, we go back to the pit work, they were already getting covered, but it, it's kind of disheartening sometimes, and then to go back the next day, the same people are in the shop again, so it's tough.
You know, I understand that, because the whole, you know, why bother?
No, but, no.
Because those guys are thinking the same thing, they're not gonna bother.
I think a lot of the frustration is with, uh, the building more laws.
Yeah, they're not doing anything, and I realize that, but it's just...
It's, it's a pendulum that swings a lot. I, I think that it's gonna start to swing back. I, he has been on the job for a long time, right? I've been in twenty-five years, and I can remember times with, everybody loved cops. And Julie Ernie was in it, and then they swung back the other way, then they started hating, so it's, it's like a vicious cycle we go through in time. And I, I think it's tough, it's got so bad that way now that it's starting to swing back. You can see a lot of states are switching over to be more conservative and getting law and order in place, which should be number one, to do to help people, look, that's the part, hopefully, take that. And I, I think that he is gonna do a, a, a great job.
I heard that he was.
Yeah.
I heard that.
He didn't work first before?
Yeah.
How many years you worked, like, five, six years you worked first?
Uh, hard time for a few years, so...
Yeah, so, um, I, I feel very proud, we've been going through a very bad slump here, from TV for the last four, five years or yes? And, and not to blame one person in particular, but a lot of people left, and we had a new chief that, that had very experience, knowing the teacher, we had a new sergeant, but knowing the teacher, they, you had, the blind being the blind, and it, it needs chaos. But now we're getting back on track, and so hopefully, I think we're gonna be very, you'll be very surprised, and very happy, hopefully.
One little side note is that I would just love to see some police presence at the community events, you know, if there's, if there's people available, of course, but, you know, just getting people out and just having that good space out again, you know, when things are happening at the veterans' pauses and stuff, just come and say, hey, what's up? You know, and we're here, and we support what's going on, and you know, just...
Mostly, I do see that, he has, that we did that before, I remember when he was here before, we used to do stop parking trucks, get out of the car, talk to people, and walk.
I think that's a good idea.
And it does.
People feel so comforted by that, especially when it's a positive, a bad rather than something negative.
Not, not to be redundant on anything, but this is also the first time we've had a full-time chief, since I was a chief, back, back in the... So, this is a new, a new start, a fresh start, and a positive start.
Excellent. No, nobody wanted to be a grand, is it, sir?
No, no. Okay, thank you, chief. Good luck. Is he in the... Go with Jerry, go Brown.
Good evening. Um, a couple of updates and a couple of asks right here, um, so we are, uh, you know, on the high and high study, which on earlier here, we've been pretty active, but we've been finding, uh, you'll, you'll see, can't, uh, on that, um, totally, uh, and so, uh, uh, there is, uh, ongoing project at Seville Building, you know, where there's a final part for him, and I will be scheduled, uh, as somebody by, uh, to, uh, kind of, ongoing active, uh, project, the water project, I'm sure folks are, they've been aware of, on, on prospect, the water line being replaced, um, the water line portion of work is now completed, um, you know, and, and we're doing, we're doing, we're doing testing right now, and it's starting to, uh, services left, switching to bulked, uh, water, because we're already, so that's progressing. Blacktop repair, that's been done today, is temporary repair, we put that back in the trench, um, while we're still in construction, we've, we're, it's controlled, it's not a kind of product that will all be dug out one by time, um, we'll have, uh, more even blacktop going in for our restoration, um, so that, that part of the work is progressing, uh, is what I've seen, it was from the contractor, uh, it's, um, four hundred, thousand, ninety, twenty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents, I mean, this is their third invoice, uh, and this puts us around one twenty-one million, uh, one twenty-four, just over one million completed, uh, they're, they're trying to try to handle one twenty-four, um, so it's three, three hundred thousand, um, to complete the project, we're getting mostly looking at the water services restoration, um, water tanks, uh, the rehab is running, we'll go down, the second one's carrying, they know, it's, uh, um, happening as a circle for so long, it's always gonna go again, so we're, um, in the second phase of the renewal process on that, um, we are under, we're in a, a water project, um, so realizing that there's some additional work at the upper water, at the active water tank, they'd like to get the opportunity to get that done, um, relative longevity of, of that facility, um, and also, we have...
The well?
The well, that, um, so that's a separate project, putting the well in, um, the well is drilled, we're waiting for the final lab testing for that, and that involves the health department, to, to help, to take use of, um, but the other piece of that is going to be putting up a well to, to, the water pipe, and so we're getting a full, uh...
Couldn't you use somebody that left the old money before that?
That's what, uh, the, 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 uh, so, it looks like we're under budget, and, and we're getting pricing from that, looking from, uh, if we have work, we're still, you know, allocating the budget, uh, so overall, I'm, uh, uh, okay.
Need a motion to this board, they're like, you know, like...
I would like to make a motion to pay four hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents to Rutledge S. K.
Second?
Second.
Call favor? Yes.
About, you're, you're under budget, so, um, for a while, we mentioned, uh, we're moving on the lab, the final lab testing, providing that, uh, class, and combining with the, with the, with the, uh, regulation, we're getting a lot of, uh, from the, um, so, um, just, uh, the initial, like, the, 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 uh, testing, uh, and I think, you know, so, so, probably, we'll, probably, we'll, 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 yeah. The other, uh, on the longer side of things, um, how's this on that, some of the, like, service line in Florida, the requirement of, uh, EPA, um, you know, that they, uh, uh, um, the, uh, the, uh, from, uh, and, uh, so, uh, that process. Uh, the last item on, on your agenda, we talked about the flat, um, but, uh, getting, getting some more details about, uh, the state has a program to fund, um, new and upgraded, uh, existing swimming facilities, in our case, a swimming pool, um, they have, uh, a program that can fund up eighty percent of the projects, um, and then their local municipality is, will, will, will have to chip in, uh, twenty percent, that's a, 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 uh, department, um, to, to, you know, third party funding, our local foundation, will actually federal funding as, as that match, uh, but, but, uh, other companies, you know, they're, they're obligated to, come up with, uh, twenty percent of that. Uh, the applications are due later this month, um, you know, in, in looking at needs of the facility, um, making, uh, that's, uh, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for repairs of the facility, which are largely, um, taking out existing, that being the active, you know, sidewalk patio area around the pool, um, and replacing all the under drains in that, a lot of which, um, are, is, tight and holding much water, it should be, um, I think part of that was probably done in, uh, was damaged in the two thousand six one, um, that whole area was inundated pretty good, um, and, and, uh, there are a lot of damage, um, that were repaired on the pool after the two thousand six one, I think some of the settling, uh, pipes and, and, uh, the, that, uh, is probably over time, that's, uh, all, all that said, uh, the, the, uh, market wanted, uh, suit funding for, you know, upgrades of the pool, uh, we can, uh, the board being to authorize some of that funding application, and probably the bigger, uh, commitment of local funding, um, so, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, probably a cost, twenty percent of that is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, over that.
When was the awards being awarded, everyone, one of the project, project, sorry?
Um, yes, so, but, they, they, they don't have a, a set date when, when they say it's gonna come out on this day, it'll probably be toward the end of the year, um, and then, with most of the state programs, and they're taking, I mean, six months, sometimes up to a year, to actually execute any grain out of the state for them to commit the funding, and a lot of times the initial award is, you know, somewhat of a, a, a check, and then you have to go through a process, kind of like closing, kind of, or, you know, it, it takes a long time, so, yeah.
Yeah, I would say, well, like, twenty, twenty-five.
So it's, it's a ways out, um, you know, so, the, the, the point, you gotta take current costs, um, it is a, a reimbursement grant, so, uh, you can, you can, you have to, uh, hire six hundred and twenty-five thousand, and then you reimburse, for eighty percent of costs, you could, uh, so, it's probably, it's probably a function where you're going to the bank, you can take a loan out, which then you turn interest, and you sure break the, uh, um, and at the end of the, um, the one or two-year construction period, the project period, you know, getting money from the city to pay down eighty percent of that loan, you're gonna have a, a bond for some time, uh, to, to, to get home.
Well, and, well, here we go with the what ifs, right? And if you don't consider it, and when you look at it, we're probably gonna have some problems in the next couple of years anyway, if we don't get any funding, we're gonna either...
Yeah, this is a...
A one or two thing, either fix it or don't do anything at all.
Um, this, this program, the first year of program, um, it's, that's a probably, we'll, we'll, we can, have to get more towards urban areas, um, but the, uh, we need to act right to be eligible for it, um, other park and pool programs, like, seeing, um, the state, and, uh, they have eighty percent brands, uh, so, uh, we're looking at the program, um, we're, uh...
You go back, Mark. No, that's good, I mean, we, we, you know, I, I, when, when I, I just thought, I would, I had, there was a seminar that was on from the state, um, the past, but, huh? No, that's good, I mean, we, we feel, I was, I was trying to thought, I was, I had, there was a seminar that was on from the state, um, the past, but, huh? Yeah, no, yeah, no, 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 there, there was a seminar that, uh, Senator, uh, Joe Ranswell had on there. And he talked about all the different arts and grants that were out there, one of the grants, believe it or not, had, it had to do with parks and pools and rinks and things like that. So that may be a place for you to get the money, but that was seventy percent.
That's, I mean, so if this is state dollars, you can't use another state program to, to do the match, but you can use typically, you can use federal dollars, you know, so if the Senator had something available, you know, for a viable program.
Yeah.
You know, in fact, if you do the state match and the state doesn't, it's a federal match, um, the match will, it won't have how much of a benefit.
Good. Do we have, uh, what should we do, what do you want to do?
We have motion to split ourselves on the local, hundred and twenty five thousand.
Well, we could talk by the way for.
Right.
It's, it's why we don't necessarily have to accept.
Right.
But that's a, it's a fine, fine people what happened, but it's, it's gonna be a couple of years anyway, so, but. I, I would rather at least apply and see what position we're at than not go fly and have the pool break down in a year and a half and say, what are we gonna do now? At least we have an option, so we need a motion to.
I think you want to request.
Need a second? All in favor? Vote, okay.
Um.
We have no more.
Yeah, there's no, because the one is to apply for the funding, then the other is to commit the local bank, if the local bank is coming to, um, shoot, fifty five thousand. So then the motion is to use after, and then the local bank's gonna have twenty percent of the project cost.
All in favor? I vote, okay. Okay. That's it? Thank you. Anybody else, I'm sorry, any other questions at all?
Uh, yeah, we can see one other program that's, that they like, they love to call funding.
Is the E S C a state thing or is that a federal state?
They, yeah, they're, they're primarily a water, it's water.
Yeah. Good, thank you. We just want to try and change. And John's apartment. Appreciate it.
Everybody get my report?
Yes, you gave it to me there, I got it there. Been a rough month. I got mine.
I only have one request, that you'll purchase food, chemical, beef, pumps, and by lots, process government, for the Seabed building, which is a hundred percent, and maybe cost four thousand, three hundred and thirty six dollars.
I'll make that money.
All in favor? That'd be great motion, that's, if, 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 if we're gonna say, but it's good.
Hundred percent.
Yeah. Nothing else? Hey, John?
No, my, yeah. Everybody knows that we get it.
Twenty?
Yeah.
You hate it? That's good, guys.
But, um, sorry, as everybody knows, we have an issue with the, the, or, like, everything's done.
Issue with the, the, or, like, everything's done, plus the, 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 uh, we've sold pumps, so then we end up getting, you know, stuff, we've got even been, you know, sixty thousand dollars, so, they, 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 they're probably over fifty thousand. So, but, you know, through that, and then, and now they're going into our pumping area, two things, a lot of, um, mass pump, um, and, 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 places like this, and pump, uh, pump around. So anyway, we, we presented this much before, and I'm trying to give you the, there's no, at this time, there's no, when I say that, if, if you wanna move ahead, you can, we brought it up several months ago, um, and, 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 kind of, kind of, so, um, the cost, the total cost, and again, this is enough, this could be, uh, when folks get allowed for business and what have you, is, um, one million, forty million, five hundred, four. But again, um, keep in mind that once you go down to, to the, these, um, these amounts, um, if you wanna look at, for, um, like, buildings and things, forty-five percent, but, you know, if you're gonna find out, like, this is like, you, a year, for forty-five percent, I mean, we did that, fifty percent, you could probably look in a three-year, not with, with, you know, application. And, again, costs could continuously, you know, not quite, um, dropped.
Yeah, I remember the first time we talked about this, was, what, years ago, it was like four hundred thousand, or like that, it's more change.
Yeah, a hundred change, yeah.
With everything, so, in a matter of two years, it's gone up to three hundred thousand dollars, and, and this is very important, because, why do people don't take it, we don't know, there is, every time a, a pump goes out, or, you know, they, you know, thirty thousand here, fifty thousand there, fifty thousand there, it adds up.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're looking, not, you're, 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 you're.
And, and the screen will catch all the, the, right, things that shouldn't be, you know, they, from the bottom out, they, they have something, they, they, yeah.
That, that's really when the, when the country's moving, you know, it's outstanding, from, when you're, when you're, when you're, when you're, collecting area, how much, it's, 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 but probably not sure. So, to our, near cities, twenty percent cost due to, um, you know, what, if you know, they're, they're, going, and, and, you know.
Well, I'm gonna, I'll mention that the, uh, the watershed, the coalition wanted to town, right, you have the meeting, the negotiations with the city, I'm gonna bring this up, I'm glad, I'm so glad, do they wanna up, how much they give us, and how much out, so they, we can, we can, we can, yeah.
Just like, we're, 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 yeah, I know, but, eventually, when, when things work, it's, 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 it's.
They've gotta, they've gotta, they're saying they gotta do it, they just haven't put it right yet, so I said, I don't believe it until I see it right, and then I'll believe it when I know it, but, this is something we, we really have to do, if we keep putting it off, next time around, it'll be a million and a half before we get it in, and, and, and save a lot of money in between, I think, anyway.
The advantage is that you don't have to plan it up to nine, to, and then, uh, and, 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 uh, if you, um, so, I'm, 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 you know, you must, 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 you must.
So what kind of motion you need for, to, after, after, again, again, or?